The Sheriff's Department is first.
Yes, if you can see on the program, I'm about to shoot that from around your house. I came back from work. Um, I was pointing time when, uh, when everybody has busy time in this case, it's our dog, Loki, who has been with us the longest. Um, sad to say that he's eight years old. Due to the health and safety of the animal, I'm asking, he's been asking that we retire him at this time. Um, I want to thank Loki for his years of service. Kind of served at rescue efforts on behalf of Loki. Um, kind of my favorite dog. I like Loki. Watched him do a lot of programs with Seth. Seth's going to help with the other two dogs. There's still other two dogs. I'm not replacing Loki at this time. After some legal paperwork that Mr. Tankersley is going to make out, and I ask that the commissioners give Loki to Seth for about his years, and hopefully that's, that's quite a few years. So I'm asking the commissioners, and in the past, the commissioners have given the animals to the handlers. So I would ask the commissioner, since it's your dog, to give Loki to, sorry, the rest of his years in return.
I'll make a motion to give Loki to this.
Um, I'll second that.
Okay, moved and seconded discussion. So what time, uh, after this, after this vote, he no longer is employed?
Each hand is given, um, so much compensation. May eleventh was actually his last day working.
Okay.
So as I said before, Mr. Tankersley is making out some paperwork to officially, um, and Seth will agree to it again. Commissioner will, uh, some legal paperwork he had done. As soon as that's done this week, Seth will sign it. Um, you guys will sign. I assume is that right, Kevin?
Yes, that's right.
But officially, May eleventh is Loki's last day on the department.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Mr. O'Donnell? Go in here. Hey.
Nathan? Morning. Uh, first, wanted to give you a few updates on the courthouse project. Uh, Project Superintendent John Allen, same gentleman who ran the Justice Center project, was on site most of last week and his construction trailer was delivered. Now that Baker Tilly has sold the bonds for this project, Mr. Allen has others on site beginning this morning, the first kind of official day of work. Uh, there'll be an early emphasis on prep work for demolition, utility disconnection, so nobody electrocutes themselves, um, protection and or removal of pieces that are in the building and are to be preserved, like, uh, fireplace mantles, that sort of thing, and other prep work. Uh, it'll probably be another week or two before we start seeing a lot of sledgehammers flying, but they're getting everything ready to go. Site fencing will be installed on Wednesday, the twenty ninth of May. At this point, the sidewalks on the northwest and south sides of the courthouse square will no longer be available to the public. The US thirty-five sidewalk will remain open. The sixty-six easternmost feet of Meridian Street, that section that is part of the town of Winamax Public Street Inventory will remain open, providing access to Howard's Marathon, as will the westernmost part of the street, allowing access to parking spots on both sides for the Justice, for Justice Center visitors. However, through access via Meridian Street will not be possible after that date, as the middle section of it will be enclosed within the fencing, as will the parking spots between Howard's and the Justice Center, and the parking lot on the south side of Jefferson Street near the maintenance garage. Made a Facebook post about this already and intend to share two reminders before the fencing goes up. Justice Center elected officials, department heads, and others have also been advised of this.
At what, at what point, uh, Nathan, does it become a completely restricted area? Why do we need a public access from the east?
Oh, so that's just public access into Howard. There will be fencing there.
Talking about a sidewalk.
Oh, um, we're keeping that open just so that people avoid unnecessary crossing of the highway? The fencing will just go up on the courthouse shard on the east side?
Okay.
Yeah, there won't be access onto the side. It'll just, the fence will be up higher so that people can still use the highway, the sidewalk.
I'm just thinking sometimes it'll be a completely restricted area. Sledgehammers flying, as you said.
Well, ideally, none will be flying that close to the street. I'm going to be a little concerned about the, uh, project's progress if we're breaking up things over there. Now, when, when work is done on the, uh, retaining wall, it'll be moved out, but for as much of the project as possible, that east side sidewalk will be open, so nobody has to make unnecessary trips across the highway. I mentioned that Baker Tilly sold the bun, bonds to fund this project on Thursday, to be precise. Uh, the sale will not close until the first week of June, so there may be some minor adjustments made from the draft amortization scale to the final one and other documents. But the winning bidder, RW Baird and Company, offered an interest rate between three point eight five and three point eight pers, point six percent, and a premium that netted the project an additional five hundred and fifty thousand, nine hundred and ninety-seven dollars and forty-nine cents. Funds not subject to the thresholds that otherwise limit our ability to issue debt for this project. This money is just like the debt issued and can be used for project scope items as contingency, or if left over, for debt service payment. Baker Tilly has advised us that we may wish to invest some of the bond proceeds in a short-term CD to generate extra project funding, funds that would also not be subject to that threshold. After June sixth or so, and once we have a closer sense of exactly what that date will be, I'll make sure that you and the treasurer are aware.
Would that require, uh, commissioners to place that on a CD action?
I will double check, but I don't think it will be. I think it'll be a building corporation thing, but I will double check with Baker Tilly before we do anything. I'm waiting for Barnes, uh, for Ton and Blank to give me a rough draw schedule, so we know how much we could put in for how long before we'd have to have more cash on hand. Um, I have been in conversation with the clerk regarding delays on document scanning, and it looks like we'll probably be bringing a moving company to do one last relatively small job to relocate some clerk's office vault storage fixtures to the basement of the Justice Center, so that we can remove additional record books down there, along with possibly assisting us with some furniture that may or may not be refinished by the woodworker, but is lower priority and will be dealt with later in the project. Any questions on the courthouse today, other than, like I said, today is the first real day, uh, we'll see people on site? Yes, Laura? I think mo, yes. Demo work, it, it'll be a little more sporadic as they're just going through, like I said, doing disconnect work, all this stuff, but once they really start diving in, yes. I can't answer that, but I can see what Ton and Blank can tell me.
This, um, additional moving cost. Can that be, uh, responsibility of this company that is delinquent in getting these files copied like they should have six months ago?
That is a, that is a very good question. Um, Joe and I can talk to them about that. I don't know what the clerk's plan would have been for these fixtures otherwise, if there still would have been necessity. But obviously, yes, there has been a serious ball dropped by the imaging consultant.
We're still holding their payment.
Okay, and then very briefly, uh, the Willow Creek Villas Housing Project. I don't think I've addressed this in a meeting, but I know that it informed you all, uh, on Thursday, the twenty-fifth of April, the Indiana Housing and Community Development Authority officially awarded Sullivan Development LLC low-income housing tax credit support to build the Willow Creek Villas project on property east of the Winamax Plaza on Galbraith Drive. Uh, Sullivan Developments Travis Vensel will be meeting with our building inspector on Wednesday morning, and then with me and town manager Brad Zellers that afternoon. In the very near future, I hope to set up a meeting with Mr. Vensel, a commissioner, one or two council members, and maybe Mr. Tankersley before they come before you in a public meeting to how, hold further discussions regarding financial support in the form of a low-interest loan for the project. If any one of you in particular wants to sit in on that meeting, let me know, and I will work with your schedule and everyone else's to get something on the books. Any questions, comments?
Is this the project that there's only a couple that were selected?
Correct.
And we were one of?
We were one of two selected out of four.
Any questions for Nathan? Comments?
Alright, that's all I have for you. Thank you.
Here we have the, uh...
Gonna go ahead while he's sitting here and before we long introduce, uh, gentleman to my right. This is Claude Lemare. He is a member of the Economic Development Commission, um, nominated by the town of Winamax, and the EDC president making him a member of the CDC. Claude has several decades' worth of experience in economic development. He recently, within the last two or three years, I guess, bought a house along the river just outside of town, and has been a constant presence in my office.
Good morning.
Morning.
Pleasure to meet you. Uh, I have to tell you, but honestly, I bought the house on the river, and we're never in downtown. So we finished the transaction. And we went into downtown, and I looked. Courthouse. I thought about it. I looked at the downtown, the courthouse, the age of the buildings. This is all about history. It's all about. It's an example of our community in the United States that is making it. We need to brush up on the downtown a little bit, a couple of new stores. Some activity down there, some special events. So I, I like to donate my time. And, uh, I, I'll be back in a couple, three years. While I get to the point where I can do it more, but I, I'd like to give. To Winamax. It's the county seat. Which is a shining example of who we are. And that courthouse. I'm not close to the stairs, but I got that back, but I looked at the courthouse and thought, oh, here. I want to walk up those stairs and feel the history here. There was civil law, veterans that walked those stairs. The Ford, it'll be a Ford trial. Right here. There was history for Ford. Maybe I am working on a project. Or maybe in the Ford, the failures. We're trying to get to Ford first, which is very difficult, but we're working the channels politically. That's the way to get to the, to the assembly line in Indianapolis. So you've got a manager there, you've got pretty loose flower with Ford, and so that's where you have to get into Ford. They ask for funds. The, the history of Ford is there. They lost that trial. They lost what I have. So I did, they owe us children.
We hope you're right.
So we'll do everything possible to make that happen. So I just wanted to get this myself, in Ford. Tell you why I got like that, over fifty years of experience in special events. I worked sixteen years in economic development, with industrial parts, we did downtown, so I'm sure I did pretty good resume. I don't have a college education, but maybe a bit of common sense. Actually, I borrowed it for a lot of years. I listened to people about why do we stop in a downtown, and why do we pass through it? They stopped because it's cute, places to look, walk, restaurants to eat. So we have all those capabilities, and we've history. That's who I am. If you have any questions, I'm glad to answer them. The only thing. I'm born and raised in Illinois. I'm ashamed of the state. That's why I'm here. I can't help that. So, that is the reason I'm here. I would probably be a member of Indiana, a member of the community here. And so, that was, I can say, nobody could help where I'm raised.
Okay, well, we appreciate your time, and, uh, here's we have a valuable service in front of us, so we hope we can work together.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks a lot, Claude, and, uh, welcome to Indiana. Yeah.
It's a pleasure. I know what you're saying.
Yeah, we're glad you're here. Thanks.
Okay, another business. We have the approval and signing of the claims and payroll number ten.
Okay, I've, uh, looked at the claims, and I've looked at payroll number ten, and I would, uh, make a motion to approve as presented.
Moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
You have the minutes?
Hey, I've, uh...
May sixth, sent to us.
I've reviewed those minutes, and I would make a motion to approve as written.
Moved and seconded. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We have, uh, West Sheriff's Auditor's Office, Rowing Company. They're looking for, uh, do they have this? Okay, the list comes to us because of the five hundred dollar limit, and this is five hundred and sixty-four dollars, so we need the approval to purchase the scanner for the auditor's office through the rowing company.
I would make a motion to, uh, approve the purchase of the scanner.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We have conference requests from the Health Department. Stephen Newcom, Newcomer is our nurse, and he's wanting to attend two conferences, Public Health Nurse Conference in Farmil, June twenty-sixth, twenty-seventh, and also the twenty-twenty-four Labor of Love Summit Conference in Indianapolis by twenty-third through twenty-fourth. We would need approval on these two conferences.
Okay, I would make a motion to approve Stephen Newcomer to go to both of those conferences, one in June and one in July.
Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
There are some discussion items. Had a request for a community service. And as we find out through our carrier, our insurance carrier, Bautney and Associates, that any type of community service individual is not covered under a workman's comp. So I think we need to, as a board, make a decision on whether we accept these. We're at risk if we do. And, um, choose not to, then we need to inform all of our departments that, uh, community service individuals are not allowed. Thoughts or comments on that? Kevin may chime in as well.
Well, I certainly don't think you should have people working that, uh, you don't have coverage for. It just can't be. I know that, uh, certain department heads have said, well, they're going to have to do things that are less risky, but they're going to be around machinery, they're going to be around, uh, situations that where they might get injured. Uh, if you have no coverage, you're going to be responsible for anything that happens. And, uh, the policy that, uh, we discussed, uh, last week over this, uh, was that there was a, an additional policy that was, I think it was ten thousand dollars of coverage. It was intended originally, uh, several sheriffs who were letting inmates out and wanting to help with certain projects, and they got a policy to cover that. Ten thousand dollars of added coverage is, is very little anymore, uh, especially if somebody, you know, gets seriously injured. So, uh, unfortunately, I don't think you're going to be able to authorize that, uh, without insurance coverage. And to be clear, just so you're clear, our, our underage workers or employed by the county are covered. This is the fact that the agent made, uh, clear that, uh, the body made clear that it was only because they were volunteers, that they're not covered. So we employ people under eighteen, just have volunteers working for us that, uh, are under eighteen.
Are they court ordered?
No, doesn't matter. None of it is covered. They're not covered now. Because this is technically more court ordered, it's going to community service. You're supposed to do, community service is court ordered, not to deal with us. You just wanted to do it with the county.
What are their community service opportunities in the county?
There's a lot.
There's a lot.
Community, you can talk probation, but you can do community service just about anything. You can do it in the library, you can do it in churches, you can do it for, uh, town events.
This person, I think, is thirteen years old, cycling. I think we probably need to notify the departments. Community service. Restricted there and should not get involved in that. Underage. Employment, and that's fine, as Kevin stated. Or actually, just try and notify the departments. We're at risk, we do community service activities, no matter what.
Okay, yeah, we'll just notify them that we're not in the community service business. Our opportunities.
And, uh, we have a the Computer Systems Incorporated. Think we have a Read Action Service Agreement with them. The actual agreement, July one, twenty-three through June thirty, twenty-seven. But I think each year they want us to officially, uh, approve that contract once again, from the way that I read this. We would need a motion to approve the Read Action Service with CSI.
Yeah, I would make a motion to approve that agreement.
Moved and seconded. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Couple of other comments. We did receive, um, opioid settlement. Once again, any of this money has been yet, but the auditor's office is also made aware. And as we talked about before, you know, these things are going to keep coming in as each court case is, is solved. But in this amount, um, twelve thousand, nine dollars and thirty-four cents. The restricted abatement share, and then, um, five thousand, twenty-nine dollars and thirty-seven cents would be the unrestricted. Again, or ask go through the State Board of Accounts. Auto did, find what account it goes in, what line item it goes in, and all of that. So that's just a point of interest there that we are still receiving on this opioid fund. It have released that part of that to, uh, the foundation as they are working to, uh, drug problem issue is one of their main four items, so I think we have given some of that to them. Then, uh, the last thing that I have, again, I've talked to Adwina about this. She has wired about two grants, actually received two grants, and normally we ask that those come before the commissioners prior to applying, so we know what's, what's going on, and that did not happen this time, but now she is aware. So one of them is an immunization grant. Uh, hundred and thirty-six thousand, two hundred and twenty-one dollars and sixty cents worth of that. If you apply for the grant, you get an additional twenty thousand, goes towards equipment. The other one was twenty-five thousand dollar grant, public health emergency preparedness. And since we have not had this position in the past, and looking forward down the road, it could become a position. Um, this grant is very easy, easy to obtain. It just, it looked like from the form, you just say, yes, I want it, and it was yours. Again, we stressed in the past that people write these grants. We'd like to have an administrative line item in there to at least put a few dollars in there, because I think auditor's office is the one that has to deal with what line do I put them in, what line is it, and just like the one grant here, it has about six different line items or areas, so, uh, it can become cumbersome. So, uh, I had mentioned that to Adwina as well, as I think I have with other people. And approval. So, uh, I think that's... Do consider an administrative line item, because most grants have other one there. Uh, I would include both of those. Any other discussion from the board?
Um, I've got the, uh, large piece of equipment that the commissioners became the, uh, the county became the owner of that foreclosure action on the CDC loan. I spoke with Kenny Becker about that last week. They, through Gary Olson's auctions, they, uh, could put that through their online auction and, uh, open it up to basically the world. Uh, they get a lot of interest from all over the country, and he said they might be able to move it, of course. I know you guys, some of you guys are looking into it, and I didn't know if you guys ever got anything on your lease, and whether you want me to pursue that.
I did not get anything on my lease. Be good to pursue that.
So I'll just talk, alright, I'll talk to Kenny and, uh, Gary, maybe next meeting we'll have a contract to, to sell it.
Also, we'll have a discussion on the property itself, going...
I was going to have that conversation with them. I wasn't going to jump to that, uh, point yet. The real estate option would be much easier to sell. We've got a lot of deeds on that. Uh, and I think we're going to need to determine if we can get rid of this piece of equipment, the size of it, you know, that means it takes up that half of that room. So, uh, if we get rid of that, then I think the real estate sale will be, uh, a lot easier. It may be that, uh, we have to sell it together, so we'll cross that bridge and come to it.
Anything else from board? Or have anything else? Any comments? Gary? Go ahead.
My opinion, you are very lucky to have this man. His, his heart is in this job. He can have conversations at night, over the phone, about things. He's not a nine-to-five guy. He's got it in his heart. So be, and he could use some help. guy. He better than his heart. So we, and he could use some help. I'll tell you that. He could use some help. So thank you.
Gary?
Yes, I neglected to get on the commissioners meeting about the conference request, possibly to go to the IH's conference in Indianapolis on June the fifth and sixth. I've not registered yet, but it's very interesting. They have been some third of the, I believe.
Okay. You restate the name of that conference?
IHs is like the association that kind of, how it, the supervisor, they want to stand for.
Okay, June fifth and sixth?
Yes.
Have a motion to approve Gary's conference request?
Yes, I had seen some information on that. Make a motion to approve that. Request?
Moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Meeting's adjourned.